Nomination submitted from. Beach and plum trees. Great. Thank you. This year, there was a tie for two residential areas. So Karen, Carol, would you come up? Carol Serbia is being presented the Green Leaf Residence Award this year. Each year, Carol has provided much beauty to neighbors, pedestrians and motorists who travel by her home located at 1622 Kennenstein Avenue. Her side and backyard are adjacent to 18th Street and displays the beautiful perennials and annual flowers and grasses. The property has a variety of trees and an amazing flower garden catching your eye right away with the assortment of colors comparable to a spring rainbow. I talked to John and Vicki Sehie, who were your neighbors, and they said that they could always see Carol working in her yard and taking great pride in it. The neighbors will miss you. Carol has since, 16 years she lived in your house, and she's since left, so the house is on sale. Anyway, so drive by and see her kind work. So, thank you Carol. And the second award goes to Scott and Donna Andrews. Andrew. Scott and Donna presented the Green Leaf Residence Award this year. The property is noticed by many who travel by vehicle or walking along Valley High Road, a variety of shrubs, perennials and grasses, green colored, to the yard from spring to fall. The landscape has numerous trees that add to year-round color. Scott and Donna have lived at 1403 Valley High Road since 1994. At that time, the property had three silver maple trees in the backyard. Two of them have died, but they have enhanced the yard with many other trees. They have a red autumn ash, a buttercup magnolia tree in the back. They planted three spruce trees along their edge of their property in honor of their beloved grandparents. They have a Newport plum and Japanese lilac in their front yard. The Andrews replaced the rock terraces in front of the property in 2020. They have many different perennials and annual flowers planted there. They have even planted a crimson red birch tree for a neighbor. It is a lovely landscape with many diverse plants and trees. Congratulations Scott and Donna. And I must say, two of my kindergarten kids are on the city council. Andrew, which means. Be looking around next year for this award. It's given every time, about this time every year. So as, well, we want to see for now, but after springtime, if, in case you would want, there's somebody you want to nominate. And the tree board wants to, past president, future, and Shukai, who has been our moderator and has done absolutely wonderful job taking, for the Norfolk Tree Advisory Board. She's kept, done a lot of things for Norfolk. So, I thank her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda and the Tree Advisory Board for continuing this tradition of honoring citizens and businesses throughout the community who make that special effort to beautify their properties and the community as a whole. It's an important thing. It's one of those little things that add up to big things in a community. So, congratulations, the Extension Office, and to Carol and Scott and Donna once again for your recognitions. Okay, that moves us on to item number 18 on the council agenda under Public Hearings and Related Action. And we will open this public hearing to consider a request from Gary W. and Lynn K. Carlson and Jacob A. Carlson for a zoning change from A agricultural district to RR rural residential district on property generally located a half mile northwest of the intersection of 49th Street and Benjamin Avenue. And to kick off the discussion of this public hearing, I'll ask for some background from Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
Thank you. I've brought up on the screen so that everybody can get an idea of where this is. It's outlined in red. It's a bit over 30 acres, and it is in the Wellhead Protection District. This is 49th Street, and then to the south is Benjamin, to the north is Eisenhower. And so, because in the Wellhead Protection District, we can have four wells and four septics per quarter-quarter section. It appears in this quarter-quarter, there is already one, being there's an existing house kind of in this little cutout right here. And so, there is the potential of having three more in that land if the RR zoning is passed tonight. If they do pass it, it doesn't necessarily have to come back as a plat, as long as the three lots are over 10 acres. So, if the zoning changes, you will not necessarily see a plat come through. If the zoning stays the same as Ag, there is a potential, as it stands right now, that there can be one house on that piece of property. If there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steve Koppel, how are you all tonight? I've been asked by Mr. and Mrs. Carlson and their son to appear before you this evening with respect to this application. As was indicated, it is a request to rezone from Ag to RR. The parcel is 34.92 acres. They have had it surveyed by Mr. Schroeder, and they are proposing to have three lots consisting of 11, approximately 11.63 acres per lot. At the planning commission, there was a question about access. After that hearing, I had Mr. Carlson contact the city, and he spoke both in person and by telephone with Steve. I believe that Steve and I think Dick Johnson went out and looked at the property with, relative to the access issue that was raised. And I don't want to speak for Steve, but it's my understanding that any concern about the access issue on 49th Street is resolved or addressed. There was also a question at the planning commission as to whether or not these three lots would be required to hook up to city water or sewer. And I believe that issue has been resolved, that it wouldn't, they would not, and they would be septic tank and then private wells relative to the pieces of property. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do you actually have a plat of where those 11 acres are going to be?
Well, technically, it's not a plat. They have a survey, and I believe that was submitted. I have a copy, I have a copy with all my scratches on it, but.
You have a copy.
It should be.
I don't have a copy of it.
Yeah, it was, at the planning commission, it was, they brought it up on this, I believe they brought it up on the screen. So, there are three parcels that is you, I guess I can't even say if you'll look at it because it's not out, but there is a.
While we're bringing that up, Dave, the access issue, so are we looking at, I imagine the source of that discussion was multiple accesses or one access off of 49th Street? Is that the, is that the nature of it?
My understanding is that Mr. Carlson and Steve met, and they sat down, looked at the survey that I'm referring to, and there were specific locations where those accesses were identified. And my understanding is that after that meeting, Mr. Johnson and Steve went out and looked at it to satisfy themselves at the planning commission meeting. It was discussed that the access issue would have to be approved by both the city and the county. So, all the access would be on the, on the, off 49th Street. Thanks. That's still not.
Steve, is that an accurate reflection of discussion?
That's, that's correct. The, the south end of this particular parcel, the larger parent parcel, the southeast corner is at the vertex or the crest of a vertical curve. And so, as you go north, you're dropping down in there, and there's, we made sure that there was adequate access, site distance to the middle parcel was the primary concern. The access on the southern parcel is right at the top of the crest, just right at the south property line. And we did, Dick and I did assure ourselves that there was adequate site distance to the access for the center parcel, and then the access on the northern parcel there is directly south of the access into the other parcel there that takes up that corner. So, all three proposed accesses had adequate site distance, stopping site distance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Arns, you were asked about, that is the, the second, what is displayed on the overview is the second page of the survey, and you will see that there is three specific lots, each approximately 11.63 acres.
That's what, I was wondering if the site plan actually saw that, that diagram prior, obviously going out there, you did.
We did. They had this diagram at planning, and what we asked the owners to do was to go out and tie a white or a red, tie something into the fence line designating where they would want their approaches. And so, when, when Dick and I went out there, we, we could see where they were proposing to have approaches.
So, would you consider Lot 1 the top lot, or how do you have them labeled?
Well, they call them Track 1, Track 2 and Track 3. And Track 1 is on the bottom.
Oh, Track 3.
Track 2 is in the middle, and then Track 3 is kind of the oblong or irregular shaped track, correct?
So, where are the building sites on each one of those tracks?
Well, my understanding is they don't have any designated building site for Track 1 or Track 2 at the present time. My understanding with respect to Track 3, and Steve and I were talking about this before the meeting, there is kind of a hill more toward the west, and so the home would be, the building would happen up on the hill, off and away from both 49th Street and away from that little squared area. And then the lane would come down and run through Track 3 to 49th Street, south of the squared area where the other existing properties at.
Yeah, so Val, if I can direct you, probably a little bit east, about east, and now south just a bit, right in there's, near the top of that ridge area. So, that, that would be the building site, as I understand it from the owner.
Val, in conjunction with City Leonard saying, what we just annexed, can you show us the lines of that?
So, this is 40, this is 49th Street, Deer Run, Deer Hollows right here. So, we're just to the south of Deer Run, and we're on 37th Street. So, you'd be right about here, and over here.
Yeah, you're, it is, it is a, from Benjamin and 49th Street, it is a half a mile north, and then that's where the southern property line of Track 1 is, begins. And then it goes up north from there for, for the three hours. And in and around that area, for those of you that aren't familiar with it, there are acreages, rural acreages in and around the area on three sides. And then to the west of the property, that is currently all undeveloped property. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would add just a comment on, on the water and sewer services. So, we do have a 24-inch water main in that, in 49th that goes up to a million gallon, gallon storage tank. That is part of our transmission system, not our distribution system. We tend, our, our transmission systems are low pressure. They're not really constructed or pressurized for service, and so we don't like to see those tapped. In that particular area, we're probably about 24 PSI. And so, that's why they're not, you know, we just wouldn't consider really allowing them to tap into that.
Again, this, go ahead.
How far are, are any sewer lines that are close to that, or?
Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now. Hearing and seeing no one, Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 5th, 2021, at the request of Gary W. and Lynn K. Carlson and Jacob A. Carlson to consider a zoning change from agricultural district to rural residential district on property generally located one-half mile northwest of the intersection of 49th Street and Benjamin Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a four-to-one vote.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 19 and look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5751 approving a zoning change from A to RR as zoning categories on property generally located half-mile northwest of the intersection of 49th Street and Benjamin Avenue.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5751.
Okay, motion second. Discussion, council.
The reason I have this, the proximity of everything we just went through for the last month and a half as far as annexation and city limits, and going forward, I would like to see 30 or 40 years ago before they get annexed again. That's getting close to something that might be looked at one day down in the due to some future. So, I don't know, I don't know if I'd like that idea of being rural residential. Is that that close to the city?
Yeah, I would expand on that. I had three areas that I had some concern on. Wellhead Protection Area, and I believe Val's addressed that with the four wells and the 40 acres, you know, or quarter, I should say. So, you know, it passes that. The site plan, three driveways within 900 feet, roughly, apparently it passes that. They went out there. It doesn't pass the comp plan, which is still calling for Ag in that area. So, I don't know, I just, the lay of the land says, you know, three parcels probably is not a bad use of it. But again, we, we do get into the, kind of creating a halo around getting through those areas if we don't have any access points to get through. So, that's my concern if the city doesn't want to expand or future development, you're going to jump across acreages.
Val, I, this wasn't a unanimous vote at Planning Commission. Can you give us some of the tone and tenor of the discussion at Planning Commission, and what, what concerns may have been expressed there by planning commissioners?
Some of the same concerns were brought up at Planning Commission, too, about putting more large lots right there on our western boundary where we have quite a few right now. One of the planning commissioners asked what the comp plan says about rural residential, and so it says, "These areas are best located in places that are generally undeveloped and towards the periphery of the community jurisdiction. These areas are typically not served by city utility services and/or roads. Care should be given to locate rural residential development in a location or locations that will not inhibit any other types of future development." And so, that may have contributed to the, the one no vote potentially.
So, in terms of the comprehensive plan, do we have an accessible map to illustrate where, as Councilman Arns said, this was projected for agricultural use?
So, the comp, the comp plan would have it right in this general vicinity right here. So, you do see that, what Mr. Koppel was talking about, there are a couple of existing rural residential, and those are those two light yellow with the, the orange triangles, and then they would be in this vicinity here.
Was there any discussion at Planning Commission, given the outward growth of larger lot developments in that area, now getting closer and closer together, that there could very well be a time in the future that city services and infrastructure would come into place there? And expanded city boundaries could, could meet that area? Was that a part of the discussion at Planning, Planning Commission?
Yeah, I would say in a roundabout way, just putting more rural residential large lots up in that northwest area. Like you said, we just went through the annexation, so city limits is closer than it was before. And we are continuing to expand residential to the north and west. So, yes, that was a, a comment and talk at Planning Commission, too.
Any further discussion, council, on this? Okay, if not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, McCarthy, Muren, Clausen. Voting in opposition, Arns, Jackson, Hildebrand. We would need a fifth vote if the mayor would provide that.
I will not vote.
Okay, with the mayor not providing the fifth vote, ordinance number 5751 fails.
It takes us to item number 20. We'll open this public hearing to consider a request from Aaron Geary for a zoning change from R1 single-family residential district to RR rural residential district on property generally located southeast of the intersection at Highway 35 and East Benjamin Avenue. And to open this public hearing, again, Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
Thank you. I've brought up GIS again. This time, I was a little bit better prepared with the annexation boundary question than I was previously, sorry. The purple line shows where the new annexation boundary is. The red shows the proposed R1 to RR zoning tonight. And knowing we'll have some questions about floodplain because this blue shaded area is the 100-year floodplain, I've kind of outlined that. The total acreage is about 43.4 acres. You can see over here, the floodplain is approximately 15 acres of that. So, options tonight, you can approve it as it stands with the whole piece of property going to RR. It can be voted down and fail. If that happens, then there's a six-month waiting period before another zone change process can be requested. Or the, is the applicant? The applicant is here, and so if you want to discuss other options with him, potentially of zone changing just a portion of it and leaving the rest of it R1, I know that question has come up from a couple councilmen to me this week after Planning Commission. And so, if you want to do something like that, then I think, Danny, if you want to confirm, I believe we could table it so it doesn't start the six-month waiting period, and then if they start over with a new zone change and then a plat that comes with it, then that would just overwrite the, the tabled, so they wouldn't have to wait the six months.
That would work.
Okay. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Val. So, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Aaron Geary, the owner and the one requesting the zone change. So, what we have here is an interesting piece of property. So, just a little backstory of what started this. We were trying to sell off the top corner, roughly six acres or so, so that would be the north triangle. It was R1, and the individual buying it wanted to build a house, so we just tried to sell it as-is. But it failed in a couple of areas, trying to get that to worked out. One is access. Currently, there's a county road that runs along the blue line, north to south. It ends about where the floodplain starts on the south side, and it turns and goes over to a cemetery. Now, currently, that road hasn't been legally abandoned, but it is, for all practical purposes, wanting to be abandoned. Then there's a floodplain to the south. The state has a median in there, so access via a driveway is not desirable. We haven't actually asked the state, but I know that they don't like driveways in, in that area and near intersections. So, we went round and round with the pre-zoning, trying to figure out how we could get lots in there. And really, what it came down to is putting a 60-foot wide city street into that area, which ate up a lot of the real estate. It also changed the plans of what's being proposed as a commercial lot on the Wilson Lot next to that. So, it just got difficult, so we decided the best idea was to go for an RR, because then it would allow a driveway with an easement, a smaller driveway, that would allow that area to be developed. So, you're going to see RR, but it's going to look a lot like R1 with a smaller access road. Currently, I'm selling all six acres to one buyer. I don't know if he wants to separate that into one or two lots. It would be, you could maybe do three. It gets a little tricky in that north triangle, it just gets tight, to try to get the setbacks, the rear yard, the side yard. So, I think you're looking at really two lots. You could go down on the floodplain. However, I know there's some future plans for a spillway that Steve Ramus and I have discussed, and maybe a future dam in that area. So, that's another reason why that county road would need to be abandoned, is there's a dam that's going to go in there. So, it's just an interesting piece of property. Somebody's interested in buying it, so we're just trying to figure out a way that they could build a house in there. This seemed like a viable option to try versus forcing a 60-foot wide street to go in there. to go in there and just eat up the real estate for not a lot of gain, because you really only can do so much once you hit the floodplain. You can build in the floodplain, you'd have to bring, obviously, the lowest elevation, three inches, or is it three?
One foot.
One foot above.
Yeah.
But another thing that's also, I think required, if you build in the floodplain, is you have to prove that you're not going to increase the water table on somebody upstream. So say they built a foot above water table, and then we go down and build a dam, and we increase the water height where they built. So you have to do a hydraulic study, which I just didn't think was worth doing. And with what the city's kind of planning in that area, I feel like no development in the floodplain is in line with what the city has planned for a future water area in that area. So on the south side, it doesn't really matter to me. I'm building a house in there right now. It lacks sewer right now, there's city water there. It lacks sewer on the south side, it cuts across behind those houses. So it's a little difficult to get a neighborhood in there. The lot that my dad owns, or the forty acres my dad owns to the south, we are trying to get that into a housing development. We need a driveway, a second inlet outlet. We have figured out the county road with Madison County and the city to split, taking that road. So we have an inn from the east and an inn from the west in that area. It has water and sewer in that area, but we need a second driveway, which is owned by somebody that currently wants to build a house there. I think there's a lot in that area that's exactly sixty feet wide, like it was meant to be a future road, but it's currently owned, so that's a missing piece in that area. With that, any questions?
I do have a question. The north triangle you're referring to, where's their access? Could it be, is it your current driveway?
No, so it would come off of Benjamin, yeah, right where that mouse is going. So we've worked out a deal for an easement with Wilson and Dollar General to put a twenty-five-foot wide driveway, paved driveway easement into that area. So he's put that in his plat, I've put that in mine. Obviously, we haven't plotted anything, they're just proposals. And so I've agreed that that's fine. Otherwise, it kind of landlocks it if the state, if the state doesn't give a driveway off of Benjamin. It kind of landlocks it without that, if the...
So the plan's coming in from?
Coming off Benjamin.
Yeah.
Yep, with an easement driveway there. And I like that idea, so long as RR is allowed. Because if it's not RR, it has to be sixty feet, according to the city, right?
We talked about frontage roads and things like that, getting through there. Yeah, I think sixty feet is the standard local right-of-way.
So really, we're trying to do, it comes down to an R1, but it's, RR, but it's going to look like an R1 when we're done with just a smaller street, because there's just not that much real estate back there to work with.
And that's in reference to the northern triangle, but the zone change includes the entire parcel, right? The forty acres to the south?
Yeah, it does right now, yep.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I would hold that. There was talk of a commercial lot down there, I don't know if we can get driveway. And I hadn't, I hadn't, I didn't know it was allowed to do just a partial zone change, but I wouldn't be opposed to that as well. Another thing that came up was voluntary annexation, which I have known, that's fine, to start the paperwork as part of the zone change, to allow this to be annexed. I don't know if that solves any future problems with annexing past RR, but we're totally fine. We follow all the rules and regulations anyways. I mean, I think outside of a few tax dollars and being able to vote, really is the only reason to get, I mean, no opposition to being annexed there, so.
How many acres are in that triangle, you said?
Six is what we tried to partial off.
How do you make that look like an R1 on six acres? You said it would look more like an R1.
Right, so it won't be R1, it'll be RR. But, I get what you're saying, it's going to be houses in there. If we could fit three houses in there, I would be surprised with the setbacks, just because that triangle, once you set back twenty-five and sevens on the side, that triangle is pretty small, and then the floodplain, it'll be just a field, really. I mean, with a house or two, is what I'm guessing you can fit in there. Outside of that, I mean, it could maybe go commercial. I don't, I don't know what you could do in there commercial-wise, or who would be interested with an access like that.
I don't know, I guess I'd like to see it maybe get tabled and put this self-annovation, where you come into the city limits and then you develop from that point on. That way, it may be time to redevelop the plant without having to go back and start over and wait six months.
So how would that look? So if it was tabled and then we redid it, what would you want to see, or what would the...
Because I would like to see that, you talked about slating houses, or putting houses on the south.
I'm just trying to sell the six acres, yeah, I don't know. The north side, not the south. Oh, that's a completely different lot.
Well, it's all in the red area of the actual.
No, so the other lot that we're looking to is the next one down, which we're not asking for a zone change on that. That one, that one would be R1, and it's almost ready to go, it's missing.
According to what's outlined there, where that pond is, is more than they asked, right?
Yes, yep. Yeah, and that wasn't necessarily, but that area wasn't what I was referring to as far as the R1 and the access. Where the pond is, we need sewer in order to develop that area. And right now, about halfway through that floodplain, the sewer crosses Highway thirty-five and goes behind the houses on the other side of the street. For the house I'm building, which is on the east side of the pond, it was about twenty-nine hundred feet to get to sewer. And I didn't open any lids to see if I had fall that far. I don't know the depth, but there is some, so that area is missing some sewer. You could go southwest, but you're going to need a forced main of some sort to get that direction. It just climbs in elevation that way.
So in the whole thing, basically what you're saying is the whole access, the triangle, ignore the rest of it?
Yeah, that would be fine, that's fine as well, it doesn't matter to me. I was looking to sell the six acres, is what I'm looking to do now, so. Or we can do the whole thing, and I can do a zone change later with whatever comes up. I mean, as far as, if sewer never comes, then maybe that's an RR area, so people could do a septic system in that area. There's city water, so maybe Steve could comment on that area as far as future sewer. No, the north six acres, you can get sewer there, it's there. It's in the ditch there.
Yeah. Like Erin says, our sewer's on the west side, as you continue down thirty-five. It crosses right around where that pedestrian bridge is, kind of in that low area. Probably to serve him, we'd have to look at into that southern area where the lake is. We'd need to do some sort of a main extension to the south along the east side, and see if we can serve that. That's not something that's really been looked at, because that hasn't been a real focus. But that's possible, otherwise, you know, you could look at a potential for individual lift stations, residential type, individual residential lift stations in there. But those would be a couple options, either that or RR and septic.
Hadn't looked at it much outside of, and I don't really have a plan for the future in that area. We'll see what the south area brings, if we can get those pieces. It's kind of locked down right now with those pieces, so we're really waiting on that. That area is really where I think the development starts, coming from Eastern Heights, from the south to the north, is where I think you would start. I don't think you would start at the lake and try to go south, so I just...
So Erin, it sounds like right now the motivation asked for the zone change is access on the north parcel, the flexibility that that brings.
Yep.
But I hear some questions about with that bringing the entire property along, and whether that makes sense in terms of projected land use. And again, I'm going to ask about comprehensive plan and where, what that calls for in this instance.
And I think Schroeder did do a little plat and send it in right now. So that north six acres does have an initial plat, like done. But it got shot down, just because of this.
Now I froze. The comp plan does call for it to be single-family, there we go, now I moved. So it's this area right here in the comp plan. So this is suburban acres, Eastern Heights, and so it continues that yellow, single-family.
Val, is a rural residential a minimum of ten acres?
Rural residential is a minimum of one acre, but it has no limit on it, whereas R1 has a limit of two acres. So that's where he couldn't have, plat off a six-acre lot and keep it R1 as all one-six acres. If he wanted to plat off three acres of twos, then you wouldn't need the zone change, you could keep it R1. But if the person, he doesn't know if the person wants to split that six acres into three lots, then that's why the zone change.
But also in pre-planning, we were trying to figure out how to get access. I mean, we spent two hours going around trying to figure out how to get a driveway.
That was the frontage road we were talking about.
Yeah. And that's what kind of shot down the idea of doing three lots, because we were willing to do three lots, that's fine. But the driveway, we couldn't figure out how to get the middle one to get access. I remember, we were like, can we do an easement, and that was a no.
Right, because all lots need frontage. So whether it's RR zoning, R1 zoning, whatever it is, it needs access to a public right-of-way.
What's the difference between what you're saying as far as a frontage road and what he's talking about, a sixty-foot residential road?
Nothing, as far as I know. I don't know how wide a frontage road right-of-way has to be, if that's something different. As long as it's public right-of-way.
You call it a frontage road, and that's different than what he's talking about, or?
By the time you put a frontage road on there with setbacks, it's going to gobble up a lot of that.
And the road does have to start on Wilson's property from the north. So it still needs an easement, which that's, the easement is what I thought wasn't allowed with R1, correct?
It's not allowed in any zoning, just easement, yeah. Whether it's R1 or RR or I1.
So...
So it's, I think it's kind of detailed. If you want to go back, Val, to the floodplain, I'll just make a couple of comments. One of the things that Erin mentioned there was some city plans here for potentially future detention. About five years ago, we were looking heavily at the concept of regional retention. In 2017, the state, there was a document that came through the state called Nebraska H2O, which was the beginning of the implementation for post-construction stormwater quality. What regional retention does is it removes the burden from an individual developer to have regional, or that post-construction stormwater quality right there on their project. You know, we're, it's one of these things that we kind of fight with after the fact, because after the developer develops it, there's not a lot of, not a lot of attention being paid to that, to that component of the design. And we end up with people with wet backyards, fences into the post-construction stormwater system. Best way to think of regional retention is, Skyview is regional retention. So you build something like that, and then as development continues to occur on the upstream side of that, all of that retention requirement can be focused into this one larger cell or water feature. This is a very natural location to put regional retention. We have a, we're cost-sharing right now on a drainage study of this big, there's a big drainage basin here. We're cost-sharing in that drainage study with the NRD, and look to have some, some concepts on that here in the next, you know, six to eight months. And then, kind of with, with some of the funding that's become available, you know, going back and revisiting that conversation about regional retention, and start to look at implementation on that here in Norfolk. The county line there, on the east side of the Geary property, would be approximately where we would look at putting a dam across to create that regional system to the east here. We do get, once or twice a year, somebody with some pretty serious interest in developing to the east. Within our CIP, we have planned for a Frog Creek, I believe it's called the Frog Creek Sewer Extension, which would be pushing a sanitary sewer line east here for half mile to a mile, somewhere down in the future to start to allow for that development out in this area. But going back to that six acres, it is a tough spot. You've got controlled access on Highway thirty-five. You might be able to get right in, right out. You know, big question on whether or not you'd be able to get access across Highway thirty-five. The only other way to really get access is off of Benjamin Avenue, through somebody else's parcel. And we've had that conversation with that landowner, and they have agreed with Erin to provide kind of a public ingress, egress access that would not have to be sixty feet wide to provide access into that northern diamond. As mentioned, carving that out into three lots was pretty difficult. By the time you got setbacks in there, I personally couldn't see three lots, three residential lots going in there. You try and put some sort of an actual city street in there with sixty-foot right-of-way and a twenty-seven-foot wide street, you're chewing up a lot of, a lot of the property. I do think it's fairly odd, you've got that hundred-year flood down in there, taking up a portion of that. So, you know, I, I see this property sitting here for a long time. If, you know, if the desire is to do something else, I think it'll probably sit there as is for quite a while.
So, given the uniqueness of this northern parcel and the proximity to thirty-five and access, and the floodplain, it looks like the flexibility allowed for in RR might be the only way to allow for development here. But then the rest of the property, the southern forty acres, I'm wondering if there's a way we can allow for that flexibility on the northern six acres because of its uniqueness, but retain a zoning designation that's more in line with the comp plan, a little higher density in the southern forty acres, if that makes sense. Whether it's, and I'm not sure exactly what that solution is, but I'm opening that to discussion, and then thoughts on that. Because Erin, it sounds like you're amenable to perhaps doing something different on the southern forty acres, that's more higher density.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's not, I'm not opposed to that, and given it thought, I just, I mean, yeah, I've gone around in circles trying to figure out how to sell this property. I mean, one idea was to extend that county road, the county line road, all the way north. And they haven't legally abandoned it, however, if you want to put a dam there, right, that, it needs to go away. So it's just a landlocked spot, and we're just, we're just trying to figure out, somebody was interested in developing it, so. That's what it comes down to. As far as the south property, I'm building a house there now, what happens in the future there, whether somebody wants to build a house, there is a burden to try to figure out. There's no way for me to bring R1 into that area without sewer, so. It's, is lacking one item as far as utilities. And I don't know where the future is to that, if there's interest in coming in for a housing development there, if money's being allocated somewhere else. So, yeah, if it went RR in that area and somebody wanted to buy a lot, it would be ready to go now. But if people are opposed to that, then I'm here to play, play ball with what the city wants to do, so. Just trying to sell six acres, that's all.
Is there a way to just zone the six acres?
That's where I kind of mentioned at the beginning intro, if you wanted to go down... If you wanted to go down that road, then we would start the zone change back again for just that six acres, and a plat would come with it. So you know exactly where that zoning's going to be and what is going to remain. So there is no plat with this right now, so that's why the whole thing got requested. But if that's what you want to try, that's what the applicants...
So that's where you discuss tabling it? So they didn't have to wait six months? He could go plat it just for that six acres?
Right.
And bring it back and not have to wait six months to re-present or re-ask it?
Yeah, you would table the zone change, and then the plat, the plat and the zone change would go back to Planning Commission because then it would only be a zone change for that one piece. And kind of how we've done it before, the, the zone change goes first. And if you pass the zone change on all three readings, then the plat is the very next item. So you kind of talk to them both at the same time, so you know exactly what you're getting with the zone change because you see the plat too.
I would have one question. Do I have to plat the south half with all the roads and everything with that? Because that was one thing that was discussed as well, and I was just like...
Right. And that's where we talked about the preliminary plat. So you would see where the road would come in potentially for that R1 zoning.
So we'd have to plat both the six and the, and the remaining?
Preliminary plat, you would, if the council's okay with it, to plat a non-conforming lot to leave the R1 zoning lot larger than the two acres.
Yeah, I really don't want to try to plat and figure out where all the roads and sewer and everything go on the south lot right now. That's just not of interest.
I, I wouldn't think he would need to do that either.
If we, if we approve just the six acres above?
Yeah.
You'd see both, you'd see two lots come in as a final plat, the six acres and the, the big one.
Yeah, I was just worried if I had to do city street, all the drainage retention. I mean, that's a, that's a fair amount of work on the south half to get that all figured out, so.
As long as the council's okay not having that done.
Because it would remain R1.
Correct. It would just be a non, non-conforming lot in R1. So you're essentially plating a, a non-conforming lot.
Any more questions from here?
Are we still in public hearing? Okay, all right. I don't think so. Any more questions for Aaron? Let's check one more time. I don't think so.
Just so I understand, it's non-conforming because it's larger than the maximum allowed in R1. That's, that's why it's non-conforming.
So it would only be one house on there because it's R1? For a single-family dwelling, it should be.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now? Okay, hearing seen. No one. Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 5th, 2021, at the request of Aaron Geary to request, to consider a zoning change from R1 Single Family Residential District to RR Rural Residential District on property generally located southeast of the intersection at Highway 35 and East Benjamin Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a five-to-zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item 21 and look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5752 approving a zoning change from R1 to RR on property generally located southeast of the intersection at Highway 35 and East Benjamin Avenue.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5752.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, council?
I guess I make a motion that we do table this as there's been a lot of discussion with a lot of unanswered questions in the discussion. So I make a motion that we, we table this.
Motion to table and no discussion, a motion to table, correct? Okay. Given that, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arnz, McCarthy, Muren, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Granquist. Motion carries to table ordinance number 5752.
Item 22, I will open this public hearing to consider a request from Marie J. Donnelly for a zoning change from C3 Service Commercial District to R3 Multiple Family Residential District on property addressed as 118 South 13th Street. And to open this public hearing, once again, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any applicant representative here tonight. She is actually out of, lives out of town and wants to come back. It's this house right here in kind of this notch down of the green C3. It is a non-conforming house because it is residential and commercial. And what she would like to do is zone change it back to R3 because she is adjacent to R3. This is 13th Street, this is CVS. Because she wants to make the basement habitable, and it's an older house that was just storage way back when. And so to make the basement habitable, they have to expand the non-conforming use. And we do not allow expansion of non-conforming uses. So she would like to go back to residential, away from commercial, at least long enough to get her building permit and the expansion of the basement accomplished. We did have discussion with her because, as you all know, we've kind of been talking about cleaning up some of the zoning in the corridors in town. And she said, that's fine. If you want to put me back to C3 in a little while, as long as I get it to R3 so that I can get my building permit, get it done, you can change me back if that's what you so choose to do. But that's the history of this request and why she's asking for it.
Have we had any building inspectors go to this property? Because if it's an older home, is that basement going to be height? Is that going to be a problem with the remodel?
I believe Steve Nordhugh's went there, looked at it, and that's kind of what started this process of you had to expand it because the, the stairs were too narrow, too steep. They couldn't fit the current building codes to the older house.
But ceiling height was fine?
I don't remember him saying anything about the ceiling height, so I would assume so.
Any other questions?
So Val, she, she's wanting to make this an upstairs apartment, downstairs apartment in the mall?
No, I believe she wants to keep it single-family.
Okay.
And not actually make it multifamily. That's just the zoning that was closest to it and made the most sense to change it to the residential. Because it's a small lot, it's a small house, so it wouldn't necessarily be big enough probably for an R1 zoning anyway.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment can do so now? Seeing and hearing, no one. Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 5th, 2021, at the request of Marie J. Donnelly Platt to consider a zoning change from C3 Service Commercial District to R3 Multiple Family Residential District on property addressed as 118 South 13th Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a five-to-zero vote.
Okay, I will close the hearing and move to item 23. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5753 approving a zoning change from C3 to R3 on property addressed as 118 South 13th Street. Motion and second. Discussion, council?
I just have one more question. How, how wide is that lot?
You had to ask me that, didn't you? Let me check here.
Making sure we don't throw an apartment up there. Oh, that's tiny.
About 40 feet wide.
Tiny.
Yeah.
How many residential lots are south of there? I know in the past we've talked about cleaning up the zoning in 13th Street. It was one of those that has blocks of residential but mostly commercial?
This is probably the area of 13th that probably still has some of the most because this is Jimmy John's area that, where houses were taken down here a while ago. So you probably have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. About 16, 17?
And across the street, it looks like it's all...
This is the big park where houses were taken down. And then you have another one, two, three, about three. Three on the east side, it looks like. Unless there's a house in there, but it doesn't look like it.
I guess my thought process is we're going to start cleaning things up and trying to make the corridors zone the way they should be. We got to start at some point in time and allow another house in the basement. That's basically what you're saying. The upstairs, I don't know what they want to do with it, or they want to make the downstairs livable.
Right. It's a single-family house. They're not planning on making it multifamily. So one person living on the bottom and one person living on the ground floor. At least that's what she said her intention was. It's just, I think it's a small house, and she wants more livable space for herself. And it's not habitable space right now, being an older house with a, a storage basement essentially.
And to your understanding, she's coming, she wants to move back to the community and she'll inhabit the house herself, or inhabit itself, house herself.
That's what she said her intention is, yes.
Any other questions or comments, council? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5753 carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition to this, I make a motion that we go ahead and pass this on second and third.
Second, Val.
Okay. Motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5753 carries on second and third.
All right, that takes us to our regular agenda. And item number 24, we look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with J. H. Hesby Company Incorporated for the Norfolk Police Division Parking Lot Expansion 2021 Project resulting in a net increase of $7,003.50.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of change order number one.
Motion and second. And for some background on this, Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director, please.
Mayor and council, we got off to a good start here on the parking lot expansion over at the police department. As we excavated the grass lot there to the east of the original parking lot, we were reminded that there was a rail yard that went through this area many, many decades ago. And quickly found a lot of, of unsuitable material to be building a parking lot on. Coal ash, junk steel. Looked like there was probably some, a brick stockpile back in that area at one time, so. In removing that, I think the original, and I know Jim Langy's here too, he might have some of the exact numbers, but I think we started somewhere north at $20,000 for that remediation of that, of that poor soil underneath there. We worked with them, we ended up taking, a, a large part of that was the disposal cost. So we ended up taking that material out to the transfer station, and that is stockpiled out, out there. Ultimately, we got the cost down to the project at just over $7,000. And that included the excavation and bringing in about a foot of, of good material to replace the bad. So in all, I think the, the $7,000 was a, a good price for the amount of work and effort that was required to remediate the site and allow construction to continue. If you do have other questions, I'd invite Jim Langy and our police, Chief of Police as well to make any comments.
Usually Jim has a pretty good memory of what went on in the city. He should have known that was under there, right?
I do, I do know after, after the fact and some other investigation, I did determine that when we built Prospect over here, we ended up taking almost two feet of that material out with, with the Prospect Avenue reconstruction project, so. Any other questions?
Seems like a pretty reasonable cost to, to add on there.
Any other questions or discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 25, I would look to consider approval of change order number one, final, with Penrose Construction Company Incorporated for the Legacy Bend Fourth and Fifth Edition Utility and Paving Improvements Project resulting in a net increase of $6,804.55.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of change order number one.
Second.
Motion and second. And for background on this, again, please, Steve.
Yeah, mayor and council, this is the, the project that's just wrapped up over on the Legacy Bend addition to, to the community. These are costs that are assessed back to the property owner, to the developer, and then they recuperate these through the sales of their lots. So this is ultimately is really not a city expense, but a developer expense. It's in front of us because these are paving districts or utility districts. The additional costs that are in here, we ended up upsizing from some storm sewer that was going in from 24-inch to 30-inch. That was about 1,800. We, or I'm sorry, that was 1,300. We had to adjust a manhole, or not a manhole, we had to adjust a fire hydrant. That was about 1,900. We had two manhole seals that we installed in existing manholes. Those were $520 apiece. And then you can see on the change order, most, most of our civil, civil projects are line item projects with unit prices and quantities. And throughout the project, we measure all the quantities that go into the project. And there were crossed, I don't know, it looks like about 45, 50 bid items. An additional $1,130 of minor adjustments to individual line items for the project. So in total, $6,804.55 in various increases across the project. It was a good project. One of the things we did on this that led to a couple of those was we get requests a lot of times to try new materials. We did try a HDPE storm sewer product on that project, which led to some of those changes in there. But again, I'd answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Steve Ramis? Okay, any discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 26, we look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement between the City of Norfolk and Norfolk Area Transit Incorporated to formally outline the operational relationship.
Make a motion for consideration.
Motion and second. And once again, Steve, some background on this, please.
Mayor and council, as part of the budgeting process, we did agree to assist in funding of the expansion of the local transit program. This formally kind of puts... This formally kind of puts, puts in front of us the, the agreement between the city and Norfolk Area Transit. It spells out that 200, $1,200 is for startup costs associated with FlexRoute and an on-demand system called Express Lift. The other portion of the funding is 108,333, which is approximately one-third of their estimated operational costs for administration and operation of the local transit system. And again, Jeannie is here tonight as well. Jeannie is the Transit Manager for Norfolk Area Transit. Any questions about anything in the agreement, I can answer those. Danny was also involved in the preparation. I would state that Jason, is it Jason Lamley? Jason Lamley is the Transit's attorney and both Jason and the city attorney have reviewed the agreement.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions? I'll, I'll just say on this, even though we've talked about, we've had public discussions on this program a few times over the last several weeks, as this agreement formalizes the relationship between the City of Norfolk and Norfolk Area Transit and initiates funding for a significant expansion of public transit services in the city of Norfolk, I think this is an important thing to do. I think the need for it has proven itself in the community and that with the reforms made to date in Norfolk Area Transit, we've seen a significant increase in ridership of people who are using it to get to school and get to work and get to the doctor. And so, I think this is serving a, a very important need in the community on a very affordable basis. And I think expanding the program even more with the changes planned in the next year and coming years will provide even more benefit to the citizens of Norfolk. So, I'm glad to see this step potentially being taken, given council approval, moving on to the next phase of this expansion. Any other questions or comments or discussion, council, before we consider this approval? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. That moves us to item number 27, which is a closed session for the protection of public interest to discuss potential litigation. May I have a motion to go into closed session? Motion in second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, again, this closed session is for the sole purpose of updating elected officials on potential litigation. Okay, the only item discussed during the closed session was potential litigation. So, may I have a motion to come out of closed session?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion second. No discussion, roll call please.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And given that was the last item on the council agenda, this meeting in the Norfolk City Council is concluded. We are adjourned.